Father, thank you, Father. Oh, thank you, Father. Be blessed are those who hunger first for righteousness, for they shall be filled, they shall be filled. There is a certainty in your word, oh God, that if there is hunger in our hearts, there is a feeling from your own. There is a certainty, there is a certainty in your word, that if we hunger, if we hunger, if there is, if there is a vacancy in our stomach for your word, we will be filled. And we hold on to that because we know that you are ready to feed us today. Oh, thank you, Father. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Father. You are the one who gives us daily bread. You are the one who feeds our spirit daily, daily. The bread that we need each day, you are the one who supplies it. If only we are hungry. If only we are hungry. So we come tonight, oh God, with hunger in our spirit, 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 with hunger in our spirit. We vomit everything that is not of you, that wants to fill our spirit. We vomit everything that is not of you, that wants to fill our spirit. We come tonight and we drink, Jesus. We come tonight and we drink, Jesus. You are the water that quenches the thirst in our soul. You are the bread that fills the hunger in our spirit. Oh, we come tonight, oh God, and we drink. Not only do we drink, oh God, we come tonight and we are washed by your word. We come tonight and we are washed by your word. We are cleansed, we are encouraged, we are edified. Fellowship is fulfilled tonight. In the name of the Lord Jesus. Thank you, Father, because you have supplied the grace that we need for tonight. Oh, thank you, because you have opened the scrolls for tonight's session. Oh, thank you, Father. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Father, because like a torch, there is now light on our path. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus, because you, who is the only one who can quench our thirst, has come with water. You are that water. Oh, thank you, Abba. Thank you, Abba. We will do your will even tonight. We open up our spirit. We open up our spirit. We set everything that is standing as a distraction right now is cleared. And you have a perfect place in our heart. You have our full attention now. Give respect to what we're doing in this moment. You have our full attention. Our gaze is on you, Jesus. 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 We are not distracted. We are not carried away. Our gaze is on you, Jesus. We give you our full attention, our Lord. We give you our full attention, oh God. 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 In Jesus' name we have prayed.
And you have to repeat it. I can't even. I don't know. It's still the same thing, you know. I don't think there was any difference.
And how about now? Can you hear me well clearly? Am I sounding distant?
Yes, yes.
Can you hear louder than me, can you?
Yes.
Can you even hear me?
Very faint. It's very faint.
Alright, good evening, everyone. Yes, sorry, I remember where I stopped. In Jesus' name we have prayed. It is a pleasure to be here again tonight. Ah, a pleasure, rather a privilege and honour to have the Lord here in a mist. Um, God is good. God is good. God has been good. God is always good. God will forever be good. And he is good to us. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Father. How are we doing? How? Um, how's our week been so far? This Thursday, how's our week been so far? Um, if you, you know, have to go to work or have to work during the week, how's that been? If you had to work and school, how's that been? If you had to school, how's that been? Um, so far, who wants to go first? You can type or you can come up here. Um, who wants to go? Dami, oh. Dami, we know your week was fine. What about your week was fine?
Yes, work and every, work was fine, at least. Started, I was learning, I started learning something new. But not new, new, actually, but at least for me was new. It was going well until today. So today was like, what made my week almost not fine, but was good all the same, at least.
Thank, thank you for going that into extra mile. Um, but I believe that you can still do, you can still do so much more. What, I mean, it was going well until today. Um.
Yeah.
Is it like you, you had trouble continuing the class or?
Was it, was it the class passing? It was, it was like, um, okay, then it was like, uh. Eh, maybe an investment passing, let me put it that way.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, you know, learning about a new investment, an investment in it, and it was going well until today, just add, I was minor hiccup. Oh, we are, we are back.
Minor, oh, shut up, Bella. Better. Minor hiccup, yes. Yes, thank you for sharing. Thank you for sharing. You see now, everybody that has questions in their head. What's the class was? They will not, maybe you are going to learn how to people, eh, how to make sketch. But I mean, um, thank you, thank you for sharing. Um, tomorrow will be better. And yes, it's the minor hiccup. In the name of the Lord Jesus, because we need you to let all the learning and comments also access to, um, the Bahamas. So your prosperity, your prosperity, and my prosperity, I don't just mean money, but like, your, your prosperity. Every area is very important still. Thank you, the Lord. But thank you for sharing. Um, who wants to go next? The people have seen how Dami did. Please, don't share, eh, eh, every word of it though. Don't share how big Jesus. How are your week, how are you, how's your week been so far? Please share, share well, yeah. Um, Huda. So are you able to come up here? Is that calling you? I am not. Oh, okay. How, how are you and how has your week been? Okay, you guys typing? Did I sign? My day was pretty great. Pretty great. It's fine, it's fine. If I'm tied, I would, I'll be your mouthpiece. So your day was pretty great. What about your day was pretty great? What about your day was pretty great? Good evening, girl. Good evening. Oh, okay. Okay, oh, you can go ahead. Bella, can you hear me? You can go ahead. Okay, we wait for Bella to, um, come back off mute. Um, so Huda said, okay, so the reason why her day was pretty great is because she did not go out. She had a lot of rest, so it was stressful. So if you go out, see, our day is not good. Lord, I'm missing you. But I'm glad you're able to rest. Bella, you can go ahead.
Okay.
Good evening. Um, remind anyone who is unable to hear, Bella.
Yes, I can hear you.
You can say something now. Yeah, I can hear you now. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? I can hear you each time you say, can you hear me? Well, I don't hear anything after that. But I don't know if you are trying to talk, but we cannot hear you anymore.
Okay. Marik has been, okay. I was, I was only.
Every time you say, can you hear me, like, I can hear you. But then, after then, I don't hear you.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. I said Marik, Marik has been great until, until. Until Marik is too great though, but.
Yeah, by now, Bella, you should have. Too great. Your week was great. What happened? What's great? What's great your week?
Okay, is it better now?
No, actually, you're broken. Actually, I don't want to type. I would rather be your mouthpiece. I'll read the phone. We just tell us why your week was.
How we hear you.
What's great, you? Okay, so we wait for Bella to type why her week was great. Um, so yeah, who died? You not forget your, your drag. So because you slept, your, your, your day, your day went pretty well. So the day that you did not sleep and you have to go out, then. Your day will go on pretty well. Abby? Oh, pretty, oh, well, there's no pretty inside. Anyway, um, rest is, rest is a productive thing, actually. It's very productive thing, you know. Um, oh, Bella, Bella, Bella. So don't mind me, rest is very productive and I, I'm a very firm believer. Rest is as productive as what, um, yeah, so, because when God created. Wow, I feel like my, my phone is just very, it just takes me off calls. You know what the last thing you do is? Please help me, what was laughing in here? Okay, anyway, I was saying that rest is productive, rest is holy. Even God rested and it wasn't, it wasn't being idling, it was it. It was a form of, um, um, just for you now. It's a form of meditation, actually. Um, what he has created. And for us, rest is not idling, it's not lifeless. Uh, that's something to do. It's a way for you to fire up yourself so that you can do even more. Glad that Huda will be able to get her rest. Um, and we're waiting for Bella to finish her describing. Uh huh. So, so Bella, these are all the things that you would have not said. Stop, all the believing. So asking, who can read for us? Who can, um, uh, yeah, who can read? Uh, chapter four to be for us and who can help us translate strong definitions? For strongs, you can, you know, send them as messages. Um, you don't necessarily have to use them or call them. You can send them as messages. Who wants to, but we need somebody to read, to read the chapter stuff. Um, and I'm saying that my head comes to me, whether text or, you know, wire voice. May I blink twice if you need help over here? Thank you, Bella. Thank you, Bella. Um, so Bella's week was great. Um, she has been on protest break, oh, until today, but she had to resume for field tests and assignment submissions, and she had to be in over states because, oh my goodness, because she lost some money. Bella, I'm so sorry. Um, I'm so, so sorry. Please accept my hugs and comfort and condolences. Um, sorry, 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 sorry. It is well with you. It is well with you. It is well with you. So you are currently in over stage right now, yeah? Bella, Bella, Bella. It is well with you and it is, it is well with everyone in the environment. It was well with the, um, family. It was well with the people concerned, people affected, it was well with all of you, Jesus. Sorry, sorry. Alright, um, you were, you were also able to get rest, so I'm thankful for that for you. Um, Timely, I can see that you're, or rather, I saw that you were typing, I didn't know if you were typing. Let's do this. Let's do this. How are you? Okay, so who wants to read for us? While we wait for Timely's typing. Who wants to read? Who can go off mute and read?
Okay.
Yay. Send in the strongest definition, please, just do something and, um, so that I know. Um, yeah, so thank you. So Dami, what are you reading for us? You read the NKJV version of chapter six. Um, ah, I've asked where we stop, but I've already said you have to receive. I forgive all the people. For making me say it without asking. Okay, so you're reading NKJV version of chapter six and NLT, um, so that. You know, you'll have a little bit of robustness, you know, understanding. Um, but before you read, where did we, which verse did we stop? Uh huh, it's still opportunity for, for, which verse did we stop last week? Everybody is quiet. Hey, Jesus, see your children. It's okay to open the chapter to confirm. Don't worry. The Lord will not, eh. The Lord will not review you for that. So when you miss up. It's okay to, it can open, open book test. Okay, so Timilyne has responded. Um, he's doing quite fine. It's been a busy week. Dissertation submission is next week. Ooh. So all hands on deck on the narrow the week has been fine. I'm very grateful, um, to God for you and I pray that here as well. And I pray that, yeah, the, um, submission that you have next week. The process of putting it together, first of all, will be seamless for you. Um, and then you will find things of. Um, the things that you need to put in that project, the things that you need to put together at the last minute. Your rec moments that the Lord needs you to have, will have them. Um, and you will be excellent in your presentation. Um, whether you have to present physically or just a presentation, you know, on paper, you'll be excellent in it and the Lord will see you. So, while we think for you. Yeah, so, um, Dami, are you ready? No, 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 you can answer my question. Which verse did we stop last week? Oh, yeah, now, Abby, Abby, don't show yourself. It's fine, it's good to you. You have the permission. Huda, what verse did we stop last week? Oh, Huda, I don't recall anymore. Okay. Um, Bella, what, what verse did we stop last week? Is it another verse three? Hey, dummy, dummy. Hey, Jesus is Lord, oh. Hmm, Timilyne says, I think it's verse five. Is it, is it, is it, is it that much, you people, eh? Come on, come on, come on, come on. Reach from deep within inside you to remember. Actually, um, Timilyne, sorry. Um, ah, dummy, dummy now, dummy now. I was already bringing the, eh, what's it called? The, what did they call that, you know? In Baqwe. In Baq, eh, well done, the servant. So you're the one. You not a bastard, eh? Oh, God. But it is well. It is well. I'm, I'm trying not to judge you right now. Um, but I can, I can, I can, I can, I can. Okay, so verse five. Thank you, Timilyne. Um, so from, so we'll start. So we'll start from, I mean, the entire verse when you're reading, um, the entire chapter rather, and then in NKJV and NLT. You have a flaw, so.
So, uh, I'm already doing like chapter and verse by verse, verse one in the NKJV, then verse one in the NLT.
The entire chapter in NKJV and then the entire chapter in NLT.
Okay. Um, okay, Psalm six from verse one, NKJV. Oh, Lord, do not rebuke me in your anger, nor chast, nor chasten me in your utter displeasure. Have mercy on me, oh Lord, for I am weak. Oh, Lord, heal me, for my bones are troubled. Verse three, my soul also is greatly troubled. For you, oh Lord, how long? Verse four, return, oh Lord, deliver me. Oh, save me for your mercy's sake. Verse five, for in death there is no remembrance of you. In the grave who will give thanks to you, or who will give you thanks, Father. Verse six, I am weary with my groaning. All night I make my bed swim. I drench my couch with my tears. Verse seven, my eyes whisk the weed because of grief. It grows hoard because of all my enemies. Verse eight, depart from me all you workers of iniquity. For the Lord has heard the voice of my weeping. Verse nine, the Lord has heard my supplication. The Lord will receive my prayers. Verse ten, let all my enemies be ashamed and greatly troubled. Let them turn back and be ashamed suddenly. So, NLT, now from verse one. Oh, Lord, don't rebuke me in your anger, or discipline me in your rage. Verse two, have compassion on me, Lord, for I am weak. Heal me, Lord, for my bones are in agony. Verse three, I am sick at heart. How long, oh Lord, until you restore me? Return, oh Lord, and rescue me. Save me because of your unfailing love. For the dead do not remember you. Who can bring you from the grave? I am worn out from sugging. Now this verse six. All night I flood my bed with weeping, drenching, drenching it with my tears. Verse seven, my vision is blurred by grief. My eyes are worn out because of all my enemies. Verse eight, we will, all you would do evil, for the Lord has heard my weeping. Verse nine, the Lord has heard my plea. The Lord will answer my prayer. Verse ten, be all my enemies disgraced and terrified. May this ugly day turn back in shame.
I don't know if I should say ha or say amen to that. May the Lord bless the reading of his words. Amen. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Um, who wants to do strong? Strong destination for us. Um, Timilyne, can you can help us? I would like for you to help us with the reference scriptures. Um, we don't have any. Bella, why did you, why did you, um, okay, you're already typing. Ah. Bella, please just say yourself, what you typed, I don't understand. And why did you not type it anymore? Um, so this part that says, uh, oh, I think you're doing. Oh, okay, it's beautiful that we can always relate to you, what I've gone. It is very practical. Um. Okay, yes, we do have, we do have. Okay, so. Alright, alright. Why you are back to me? I would, um, call out the, just to that, we need to reference. So the part where, sorry, hold on, let me open my Bible on my, so. So when, when Dami was reading, there was a part where they listed, um, the back for you. The pictures that came to my head, because I, I chalked it in my, in my, under my breath. Pictures that came to my head there was, um. You know, when maybe your parents. Um, you and your siblings, you know, you have, they gave you candy, sweets. Um, candies and maybe you're Spanish and you've been begging, oh, please, I want more, I want more. Um, or maybe, you know, you just finished eating and you wanted ice cream as dessert as far, eh, look good in child that you are. And then you wanted ice cream and then like, no, I'm not, you know, nobody will give you. If you go and ask, uh, uh, um, dad. You know, you don't collect anything. You better don't disturb them, because I'm a sitter. You know, and then maybe your elder. You know, and then maybe your eldest sibling has been doing that to you. And then, um, maybe your dad now enters the room and is like, how are you? And then he says, oh, don't mind, dummy, um, he's, he just finished eating his food. And then he wanted ice cream and then I told him that you're not giving. And like, the eldest sibling is just there doing, you know, like. That's not gonna happen. And then your dad, your dad just is, don't you bother disturbing my life. Oh, yeah, go and take the ice cream and let me hear what. The, the revenge, you know, that comes on your face. You know, that's, that's the picture that I had in my mind when you were reading verse eight. When, um, they listed, where, where are you who do evil, for the Lord has heard my weeping. You know, it's like, you know, don't hurt me. Oh, finally. Um, yeah, so that, that's the picture that I had, that I had rather. I just felt like I could do this picture. Anyway, um, so we continue in verse six.
Okay.
And hopefully we are able to round off the chapter. Okay, so it says, um. I am weary with my groaning. All night I make my bed swim. I drown in my couch with my tears. I mean, here, again, it's lamentations, lamentations of David. This is what if you call this stuff, you know, um. And I think that one important thing to note, which, which we may already know, but just to remind us again, one important, very important thing to notice that. In all of David's communication with the Lord, there is no place in the Bible, well, not recorded. You know, and if it's not recorded, then it means that that's not God's, um, um, heart towards David's communication or mode of communication. You know, there was no place in the Bible, in New Testament or Old Testament, where the Lord rebuked David for calling on him. Even in his mess, even in his mess, even in his mess, even in his mess. You know, I always think of it, I say, oh, it's just David, you know, David is Old Testament. I, I really don't like it when people do that. Oh, Old Testament is gone and then you really do New Testament, because if you are a true disciple of Christ, you know that. Old Testament is, you know, is new, actually, and New Testament is old. There's a way that my teacher explained this and it makes sense, because Old Testament was a provision that had to be made. Because the New Testament had not been materialized, you know, because what we call the New Testament, um, is actually what the old thing is. But in the Old Testament, all those impro- improvements had to be made because people were not ready for. You know, the dimension of grace that God was ready to give them. Um, so for example, consecrations. Were not, were not, um, heart fest, they were material fest, you know, like you have to anoint, I can find oil, actually olive oil. To anoint your, um, articles, to anoint your cups, your plates, your spoons, you know, to anoint your robes. To anoint the person, you know, like all those things had to be done physically, um, because it was an improvisation. For the actual Old Testament or Old Covenant, you know, um, as Jesus said. For, in the beginning, it was not so. And that beginning was not Abraham, you know, it was, it preceded Abraham. So, Abraham. Worked with God, um, Inox worked, worked with God, even Adam, you know, after the fall. Everything after the fall became New Testament. Let me not confuse you people. But, yeah, um. It's just interesting and, and that's one of the things to do, to bring back the old. What we call new that we think, oh, you know, now we're scrapping the Old Testament and we're coming into the new. You know, it's not new, it's just a, um. It's just a kindness of the actual thing, you know, like the actual template. Jesus just came and said. Look, you've been playing for so long. This is actually what is supposed to be. This is the real deal. This is what it, this is how it has been with my father. And now, I'm coming here to show you, you know, what is possible through me, the life that you have through me, the life that you can access. The many things that you can do in my name, uh, through me and me, you know, um. The oneness, the intimacy, you know, I am the vine, um, the true vine, rather, you are the branches, um, 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 abiding in me and abiding in you. You know, whatever, not by the me, there's gonna be, all of those things, like that, that's the old, that is the ancient truth, you know, so it's not new. In that sense. So, if we look at the Old Testament and say, oh, we're scrapping you because, um, in this time, just have not come, so there's no point. You will be shocked because you have missed a whole body of truth, um, you know. And when we think of old, old and new, I think, well, the way that we understand it, revelation aside. Um, we're not thinking of Old Testament and thinking, oh, we're scrapping it, or, oh, that's how it should be seen before, we're no longer doing that now. You know, we're, we're looking at it as that's how they have to prove things before, but this is what they were trying to achieve. Consecration, for example, they, and they have to physically anoint, um, I mean, we still physically anoint, but I mean, we know that the consecration of those things. Oil in itself, but in the, um, um, in the separation that we, that we accord things in our hearts. You know, so, um, when, when somebody wants to. Anoint a space, for example, and you just walk in and then you pray, and you just pray for the name of the Lord and say, the name of the Lord. You know, this place is dedicated to the Lord. You have anointed that place, you know, you have anointed that place. Uh, but in the Old Testament, well, like in the books of the Bible, they have to use a physical oil, a tangible thing to present that anointing. The anointing is not in the oil, the oil is their representation of the anointing, you know, um. I mean, the anointing is in the oil, but like the, the thing that carries that anointing is not the oil itself. The oil just becomes a tool for that anointing to, um, to, to, what's the word now, manifest, to, to work. To be used. Anyway, uh, so, back to where I said, um. There was not the, you know, regarding the, regarding the more the communication. So, this is to tell you that. The Lord wants to have dependency on him, and this also means, even in times when you don't feel that it's. Paul did it, Jesus did it, you know, um. If it's possible, Lord, let this cup of suffering pass over me, because he was, he was in agony, physically, spiritually, mentally, and all the ways. He was in agony. He would rather, I mean, his flesh would rather not go through that. Because, do you know what it means to be, to have enjoyed God's presence, to have enjoyed being with God? And then you have to go on a journey and be separated from the presence of God, because that's what happened when Jesus died, you know. That was the agony, it wasn't just the physical beating and the blood that he was shedding, it was that he was going to be separated from. Um, 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 from God, actually, to go and fight for us, you know, God had to separate himself from, from himself. It was painful, because when you entered the presence of God, there is every, um. Opportunity or chance that you will not want to come outside. And that's why, when we, when we're deeply into worship and we were just, you know. Consumed by the glory and the presence of God, it's like, if you stop singing that song, like, I'll crush you. Or you will say, okay, everybody, I found a, boom, I can't, I can't, ah, I can't kill it on. You know, because you don't want to leave that place. And if you've ever had an encounter, um, um, with the. If you've ever had somebody tell you about, you know, the presence of God, I mean, maybe people who, um. Died and then were revived, and then they're like, why did you do that to me? Like, I was good where I was, you know, I was fine. We should, this world, there is nothing, oh, God, you know, and then even like, you'll feel us, and you'll say, ah, there's no glory in this world. Because actually. But, um, the, the overwhelm of, 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 or rather, the, the beauty and the glory in the presence of God. Just have to forsake when he, after he died. So, those two days that he was in the grave, he was wandering in the grave. It wasn't just he, he was actually separated from God the Father, and then he had to enter his fullness as God the Son. You know, to go and do the things that he did for us, I mean, such a privilege. Um, and. Jesus lamented too. My God, my God, why have you forsaken me? Because he was a forsaken, you know, he was a separation. Um, part two, when he, when, when he touched him, but over, you know, when he, when he meets him, where. When he met him, anyway, you know, he said, um. Ah, how did he say it again? Before I said, your grace is sufficient. Take away this stone. Okay, say, please, I pray to the Lord that he should take away this stone of flesh for me. But he said, my grace is sufficient for you and my strength is made for that in your weakness. You know, so the Lord did not rebuke. Paul or rebuked Jesus, you know, like, God did not rebuke Jesus for, um, lamenting in that, in that, in the way that he did. And so, I mean, now that we have seen that even the, even an apostle, even Jesus himself, you know, like had those times when he was really. Depressed, actually, um, what he was going through. It is also very helpful to note that. The Lord did not rebuke it. So, the thing is, sometimes we treat God like we, like our, like our friends. Sometimes when, when you are lamented, you have, you have cried, 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 and maybe you have somebody that you're always going to cry to. After a while, the person says, ah, like Alpha, wait, now you get problem. It's okay now, hey, you know, because, um. In my mind, I'm also going through something, you know, you don't see me offering you to them, you know, like, it's just a lot for them at the moment. And maybe they lash out, maybe they just, you know, shut you, shut you out. God is not like that. God is not afraid of you depending on him. In fact, that is what, that is how he wants us to be. And that's why Jesus says, when you pray, pray like this, our Father who art in heaven, you know, hallowed be thy name, um, um, the kingdom come, that we be done as it is meant. Give us this day our daily bread. If God does not need you to rely on him for daily bread, you know, he will not ask us to pray like that. A daily bread means for each day. So, you are not keeping for tomorrow. You are not keeping, you don't have anything from yesterday. What you eat in the day is supplied in the day. So, you need dependence to do, to get that kind of life. It's not, it's not this, you know, it's not, it's not, eh, it, I mean. In a world that preaches otherwise, you know, like, oh, save, and by daily bread, I don't mean money, I don't mean like what. Daily bread is something about the word of God, the actual life-giving word of God, you know. So, the, the word that you need to, to live with or to live on for this day, give us this day our daily bread. This day. So, this day means now, give us what I need for now, the word that I need for now, give me now. The word that I need for now will not come last year, you understand? Um, so, God does not expect us to depend on him. I mean, depend on him like a mess, like we don't have life, like we don't have, we don't have any, there is no other. See, the blood that is running through our veins is God. So, if you, if you take away my dependency on God, I would die. I don't have anything else to rely on. It's a lot. So, if you take away that dependency, you say, ah, you just want to use your brain now, like people would say now, oh, you know. Uh, why don't you use your brain? Why, God didn't bring. And I understand, um, the, the context of that. Um, um, which is true in itself, but if you bring it, if you, if you try to use that to separate dependency on God, you will be, you know, preaching falsehoods. You know, um, and so, for example, let me give you a very good example to just balance that. So, my partner would always say. Uh, people always pray to God to do what God has already asked them to do. So, for example, um, Jesus says, um, um, um. Somebody help me find that scripture that says, you know, you sample upon certain, and, 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 and. Here, but I said my brain is brainless. Yes, 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 yes. Somebody help me find that scripture on just to do this. You know, what's just the thing of the sample upon certain and stopping. And also, what was saying, you cast out, in my name, you cast out demons, you know, um. And, and every devil and all of that, because I've been found that scripture really good. But like, it is interesting to note that. When we're, all we're saying, you have brains. I'm not talking about dependency on yourself. You know, never, ever hear that from somebody and think, oh, what, what I'm trying to say is, okay, do not do me all I need, so I need to remove myself from my source. And then go and do what they're telling you to do. You will quench. I mean, the promise, is a promise, you will quench. So, dependency on God, is not saying, oh, God, please help me to do this here, and you know, he's saying, God, I put my, my strength is from you anyways. My joy is derived from you, my pleasure is from you. So, what I'm making now, now go out there and do. Whether it's casting out demons, whether it's strapping upon serpents, whether it's healing the sick, whether it's raising the dead, whether it's doing exploits, whatever it is that I now do. You know, for myself, it is not because I am dependent on my brain or my intellect or even my gifts. It is that I know that there is a God that lives on the inside of me, and from that knowledge, then I do. So, God has empowered me, as I say, I put it. You know, the, the, uh, uh, um, the spirit of the Lord has upon me, for he has anointed me and empowered me. So, the me that is doing these things, or the me, the co- the brain, quote unquote, that is doing these things, is not the, I have read. You know, the forty, eh, powers of law, I've been, lo- laws of power rather, I mean, yeah, forty powers of laws of power. You know, and then I now know what to do. No, no, no. It is that the spirit of the Lord lives on inside of me, and he has anointed me and empowered me to now go outside and do. Even Jesus is not dependent on himself. How God anointed Jesus with the Holy Ghost and with power, who was about doing good? So, the doing good was not because, oh, Jesus is just, he has a clean heart, you know, just, he's just pure and he just wants to, um, do some good. No, no, no. It was that he, there was an empowerment that came from the Holy Ghost. And so, because of that empowerment, he could do the good. So, if you think you can do anything by your own brain, as Bola said, your brain is brainless. If you think you can rely on your own strength, you will quench. Wow, I mean, I mean, but, yeah, um, thank you, Bola, for listening. Okay, so look ten nineteen, yeah, look ten nineteen, behold, I give you the authority. So, when you, I think, when, when, I mean, as I says, you know, you're not praying to God to now help you cast out a demon. No, no, you already have the authority. Authority is somebody has power. Um, I, please give me a chance. The president of a nation, you are ambassador of a country, and the president of a nation has sent you to, of your nation, rather, has sent you to another country to go and. Um, represent the nation's interest there. We are going there, you're not going as, Bola, you're not going as dummy, you're not going as Barrio. You know, you're going as the representative of this country. So, you now have an authority to, you know, make decisions or. Have conversations about the country, like the president would. So, you are giving you that authority. Your authority doesn't mean that, okay, when you get there, you cannot go and represent your own interest. You will be fired by the grace of God, you know. But when you get there, what you're doing is you're saying, I come in the name of this president. So, when we have authority, when we, when we are in this authority in Christ, we're saying. I come in the name of the Lord. So, it is still dependency, but now you realize where there is authority, where you have the, the place I have been given authority. But when it comes to lamentations, I'm sorry, I keep calling it lamentations. When it comes to lamentations, it's not authority there. He's saying, God, I don't know what to do. I need help. Oh, oh, my son is greatly troubled and, you know, they need to be, oh, oh, um. I'm crying, I'm, I wanna, I feel like dying right now. Oh, Jesus, please just help me. Oh, oh, I feel like, you know, squeezing this person's head, this person has done everything and did to me, and I feel like just, ah, I feel like, I don't, I mean, I don't wanna kill them. I hope nobody does, but I just feel like, I feel like giving them a test, I mean, I mean, I feel like giving them a piece of my mind, I mean, I'm just feeling. Please, my Lord, um, yeah, help me. So, that is lamentations, actually. Um, and in that place, there is no authority, my dear. You, you are lying to yourself if you feel like you can authorize anything. Giving the authority to do anything, because you will quench. And that's what happens when people try to over-spiritualize, um, their, their cannality. You know, when people try to do, oh, um, this can be jealousy. Oh, I do not feel jealous. I have a child of God. Oh, no, 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 my dear, come and come and drop that jealousy at the feet of Jesus, else it will, it will quench you. You know, come and drop that envy at the feet of Jesus, else it will quench you. We can be farming macho with the Lord. When we face devils and demons, we have that authority, we have power over them. When we face sin, when we face temptations, we have power over them. You know, we have been given power over them, despite never come for myself, anyway. So, in those places, you can exercise authority. You can declare, you can command, you can cast. But when it comes to issues of your heart or issues of your soul, of your spirit. Between you and something that is troubling you, that is not a devil, you have to go to the Lord, homie. We can't, I can't interest you, but also with the dependency that you need him. I feel like blood is coming out of, you know, make that, um. Distinction, because sometimes we think of how much David actually lamented, and we think of that as in ourselves, as humans. It is difficult for you to imagine that somebody, somebody does that to you, even a man and wife, like, every time your wife is always breaking down. Now only you wake me up, and that's why only Jesus can actually give you life. Only Jesus can give you everything that you need. I will not complain that you are asking for too much. Jesus will never complain that you are asking for too much. And maybe, you know, you're working on something in your heart, and God's taking you through a journey, and then every now and then you break down, and you're like, oh, God, I can't do this anymore. And then the Lord comes again and supplies strength, and then two weeks later, you are back again at this meeting, and say, ah, it's tougher today, you know. The Lord is not going to rebuke you for always coming to him for dependency. As much as possible, as Jesus said, for without me, ye can do nothing. So the doing that you are doing is because you are in him. If you remove yourself from him or cease to be plugged to the source, it may look like you are still doing some work, but life has left you. The perfect explanation is um a fan, you know, a a a, either a singing fan or a standing fan. I know a little bit about it. Um, if you, if if you um plug a direct, this is a correct, yeah, that what it call is. Hey, please, dummy, help me, which one is AC and DC? The fan that doesn't use battery, I'm correct, I mean.
Yes, yes.
Hey, my physics class, you know, it's, thank you. Um so the the fan that, you know, connects directly to light, to electricity. And it's blowing, there's light currently now, I'm bound by this, thank the Lord, um, it's blowing currently. The moment I turn off the switch or I open up the fan, it will still be blowing, but only for a while. If you look at it from afar, you think, oh, there's still light, but just give it a few seconds, you'll see that, okay, actually, that was a blowing of, um, now, now being plugged from my source. And sometimes the gifts that we have from God, that God gives us, the um things that we are empowered to do by God, you know, they they sort of give us that feel. And that's why it's possible for people to be, to be away from the source. As in, people to actually no longer acknowledge God as their God, and they are still performing miracles. Because you think, oh, if this is supernatural, then it is God in there. No, 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 no. No. In fact, sometimes eh, you will heal in the name of Jesus, and Jesus would actually heal the person eh, but it's not doing it because you are still his son. That's why we just had messing up a picture and said, I will not allow this person to use this to, you know, rub you of your own healing, so please take it. And if you remember, I think, I don't, I I think it was the end of the apostles, where um so people were preaching. They were preaching, you know, to, for a, for a very funny reason. And Paul was saying, I can't remember, but it was in the New Testament, Paul was saying, you need to meet, as long as we are populating God's kingdom, let them, let them be. Anyway, also situations, although there was a situation in the Bible where people that were not disciples of Jesus, you know, went outside to use the name of Jesus to do stuff, and it happened, like it worked, and they didn't have a relationship with him, but it worked. So it doesn't mean that they are, they are connected to the source, it just means that, okay, there is power in this name, and ah, they must really do it, let me cast it out. And then the demon actually obeyed the power in the name of Jesus, and it worked. But again, if you use that as a judge to say, oh, these people, yeah, ah, glorious sons of God, you know, they're connected to the source, you'll be wrong. So again, um, dependency on God is not a proof of helplessness. It's not a proof of brainlessness. No, no, it is the proper thing to do, in him we need to move by however we can. So I felt like the Lord wanted us to expand on that, and yes, we have, thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. So David says, I am weary with my groaning all night. And it's interesting that this this time was, you know, recorded with string, instrument, like imagine singing. Imagine singing these depressed songs with guitar. Like, I am weary with my groaning. All night, I make my bed swim, like, bro, what are you trying to do, you know? But anyway, that's how David recorded it, so what can I say? Um, all night I make my bed swim, I drown, I drown, I drench my couch with my tears. And then he says, I am worn out from sobbing, you know what sobbing is, like, I mean. You know, like, you you've got away from crying, ah, never was sorry, you've gone away from crying, you know? You know, you know, you're not in the aftermath of the tears, are you? Oh, Lord, oh, Lord, oh, Lord, you know, um. All night I flood my bed with weeping, drenching it with my tears, my vision is blurred by grief. My eyes are worn out because of all of my, because of all my enemies. Um, who's able to read strong definitions for us? Let me just list the reference verses that I would, I would want us to read. But who is a good, uh uh, Timina, are you back? Are you able to read, um, or rather, are you able to read the first strong definition for us? Um, Timina, can you hear me? Um, I'm seeing, can I, can everyone hear me?
I can.
I think it's, okay, Timina, um, are you able to to um pace the strong? Bella, please help us with, oh, okay, um, dummy, are you, are you able to help us with?
Zero, do you need that, then?
Um, yeah, yeah, putting, putting this picture, um, so I have a stuff that weary and groaning, what you mean?
Okay, weary. And to be exhausted, to tire, to toy, to faint, to libor.
Yes.
I go weary and and groaning. Sighing, mourn, sigh, that very means.
Hmm, so, so you mean the time when, I'll be thinking of something, I was like, hmm, that's me groaning. Okay, now, okay, so sigh, and mourning, all right. So, um, I mean, I feel like that, that, that verse is pretty much self-explanatory. Um, David was weary with his groaning, like, the sign that he's doing made him tired, made him exhausted, actually, that's what I'm saying. I am weary with my groaning, so all the main things that I have to say, I'm breathing, breathe out, you know. I'm tired, I'm tired, I'm just exhausted, I'm exhausted, I'm exhausted, yeah, really. And then all night I make my bed swim, that's. Just being quiet, just means. Crying. I drenched my couch with my tears, so David was really in despair, ah, well, not despair, he was really in um in pain, yeah, pains. Um, so, uh. Um, dummy, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, let's go.
Yeah?
Yes, yes, so what grief means and what enemy means?
So, what would?
Grief, grief in verse seven, grief.
Oh, okay. Uh, okay, grief. Means anger, angry indignation, provocation, sorrow, spite, rot, so. So that's what grief means, and what's the next one?
Enemies.
Okay. Enemies, adversary, to besiege, to bind, to be in distress. Narua, oppressed, hung, shut up, to be in trouble, vex. Um, okay, I agree, I think that's pretty much it, yeah.
Thank you, the shut up took me out. Um, yeah, so I mean, again here, enemies was not referring to a number of people that wanted them there, even though that's a part of it. But like the many, the many um um sad things that you were surrounded with, is what is bringing towards enemies, like the, the, the. The fear in your heart, for example, the pain in your soul, the, you know, um disappointments, like those things. Because of all his enemies, his eyes, all his. His eyes were old because of all his enemies, because of all his. Um, and these enemies are not just humans, like, because of all the many battles that he's fighting, that's what he means. All the many adversaries, the many things that are opposing him. If, for example, um, he wanted to go for an interview tomorrow, and since last week, he not like, that's an enemy. But it's going to continue some, um, some counter eh eh actions, you know, or um. You needed to, you needed to, um, you know, commute somewhere, and then somehow, somehow, there are no buses on the road. That's an enemy at that moment, okay, that's an enemy at that moment, you know, or you need to charge your phone and join C O T tonight. And there was no like, um, I'm sorry, I feel like me quite speaking a lot of my gosh this way. But yeah, like, that's an enemy, you know, because it is countering what you would rather have, or what you rather do, let me make so. Yeah, 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 um, so David again was, you know, lamenting here. The reference scripture was Job, Job seventeen seven, thank you, Amadish Nara. Um, it says, my eyes are swollen with weeping, and I am but a shadow of my former self. So Job also had the, the question of grief. In fact, Job was one of the, was one of the um depressing stories that I ever read, like, in the Bible. I remember that, you know, I was really Bible study, um, um, but yeah, Bible study with my friends then. And we said, oh, this, this month, I want to tell you the look of good, and then I'm like, okay, okay, I mean, like, let's finally get to read Job. Sometimes we don't, we don't invite by, um, P S A, oh, we've read, you know, the book of the Bible study. Or people have narrated it to us in in church, and that's all the knowledge that we have, it's always good to, it's always good. It is important, a mandate for you to go and um read by yourself and actually be nice to scriptures. And so we did do a reading. Ah, for that whole month, I was, I was, it was a lot. I'm not even going to lie, like, it was a lot, you know, so Job actually was one of the people that you can say, oh, 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 oh. He had, he went through it, you know, he did go through it. Um, but yeah, so verse eight, the path for me, all you workers of impunity. Please, before we read the reference verse, who knows who said that, um, apart from David? Who else said, the path for me, all you workers of impunity? This is a very bonus question. I'm doing my bonus here, doing. The salvation is complete, it's not eh fifty percent, send that for your life. Yes, just we say the path for me, all you workers of impunity. Okay, so let's read the reference scripture, um, Matthew twenty five, verse thirty one. And it says, then the king will turn to those who left and say, away with you, you cross ones, into the eternal fire prepared for the devil and his demons. Wow, that's such, um, yeah. That's such a love something, but yeah, um, and, I mean, so we, so we, so we, so we, so we. You know, I feel like it had been great to um read Jesus, the, 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 actually, yes, let's do it, Matthew twenty five, let's do it. Uh huh, yeah. Okay, so it says, um, I'm reading, Matthew twenty five from verse thirty one. And it says, but when the Son of Man comes in his glory and all angels with him, then he will sit upon his glorious throne. All the nations will be gathered in his presence, and he will separate the people, as a shepherd separates the sheep from the goats. He will place the sheep at his right hand and the goats at his left. Of course, that that does not mean like literally like right hand, right hand, left hand, because when you're reading the scriptures, read literally, but also understand context. Um, then the king will say to those on his right, come, you who are blessed by my father, inherit the kingdom prepared for you from the creation of the world. Wow, okay, the kingdom that God prepared for us, when he could. But I was hungry and you fed me, I was thirsty and you gave me drink, I was a stranger and you brought me into your home, I was naked and you gave me clothing, I was sick and you cared for me. I was in prison and you visited me, she just was talking here, or this paragraph was referring to the works, the good works that we expected to do. And this is not charity, I mean, it's charity, but like, I mean, it's not Sarah, we are just going around, you know, okay, this person is pathetic, we are. No, no, it is not, it is not indeed, I wish just one, give seventy people close today, it is not, um, financial. It is not bad, you know, it is recognizing a brother in need, and and by brother, I mean, a Christian, you know. Um, because the person who is still in the world is not your brother, that person is your fellow human who needs salvation. But like, somebody who who now has salvation is your brother, you know, in one body, which is Christ. Okay, so Jesus was saying, talking about good works, the the way that you love the people that you call your family, you know, the way that you love. So you see somebody, somebody who is in your family, and my family, I mean, is the kingdom of God, the family of God, and you see somebody who is in need, that need can be anything. The person needs encouragement, the person needs to be prayed for, the person needs to be succeeded for, the person needs correction, the person needs reproof. You know, the person needs um 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 a pointer, you know, somebody to direct them to something. The person needs money even, the person needs food, like those things, like, how you just see. So, so, um, charity in in kingdom is looking at a case or a person, and thinking what you just think over that person, over that situation. So, um, when you just say simply, just the kingdom of God, you know, and it's righteousness, and I realize, this is what it means. I'm looking at somebody who has fallen, a Christian who has fallen. And I'm thinking, hey, judge me, you, I mean, yes, we we do judge, actually, but that's a chip another day. But like, in my judgment, I have just ostracized that person from grace, and that being, no, no, that's not Christianity, you know, that's not Christ-like. Um, it is saying, okay, I know that you have made a mistake, you are falling short of the glory of God right now, but I will stay with you and pray with you or um um be with you until you are restored back again. You know, that is the compassion of Christ. When Jesus looked at the four thousand and the five thousand men, plus children that were not counted in that, you know, scripture, part of scripture. Um, because women are children, rather, that were not counted, um, what led him to feed them was to feed them, hmm, Lord of Jesus. What, what led him to read them was not because, oh, you know, I'm Jesus and I can do many miracles, so come here, let me give you food to eat, someone. I mean, you know where I am, you know where I am, so, you know, that's not what led Jesus to feed people. The scriptures will say, and he had compassion on them, I think it was, it was the case of the five thousand, if I can help you check. There was a part where you just said, you know, and he looked at them, and he had compassion on them, for they were like sheep without shepherd. I remember what what um scripture that is, please help me find them, please, just so that we can, um, true. Like, I still, you know, there was compassion, so he looked at them, and his heart towards them was. You know, but it was compassion, so he looked at them and his heart towards them was, you know, for them to, for their needs to be met. So when we see people, when we deal with people. When we, um, try to help people, we're not doing it because, oh, I have money, so take, no, no, we're saying, what would Jesus, what, what is the heart of Jesus over this situation? What, what is the heart of Jesus over this person, over this? See, sometimes the heart of Jesus is rebuked. Yes. Because we think, oh, do what Jesus will do, we'll think it's all lovey dovey, no, 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 it's not, it's not in God's love. Because love actually does rebuke. Scripture says, love, um, uh, rejoices in the truth, so if somebody is living in a life. You will be foolish and also be a fellow liar to be, um, accepting that person's lies. You know, come as you are, it must stay as you are, come as you are, so that you can be transformed by the one who has the power to transform. So when we look at people and we think, and we, and we want to, you know, do Jesus' house towards them, we're not saying, okay, 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 you know what, I'm not, I'm not going to make you angry. I'm not going to get you offended, I'm just going to, you know, keep loving you, keep saying nice things to you, keep, no, 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 that's not Jesus' love. In fact, the rebuke that Jesus did, whether to his disciples, whether to the Pharisees, was love, was actually love. Because they were heading towards damnation, they were heading towards destructions. So when we think of love, and we think of clothing somebody or covering somebody, whether I say anything of, okay, I have clothes to do, so let me give people. You know, it's saying that this person needs covering in this moment, and this person needs to be covered, this person needs to be, to be, um, um. This person needs to be ashamed, to be, you know, to be covered. And so I'm going to step in and then cover that person. So just talking about literal clothes, like, you know, um, I, I have clothes to do, so let me give somebody, even though that is also a part of it. But it's also saying, this person currently is naked, this person needs to be covered, so I step in and do what Jesus will do, and then I cover the person. Um, then the righteous ones will reply. It's interesting because it must go on them righteous, it was a, it was a satire, you know, it was sarcasm, if I can use that word. Then these righteous ones, like the so-called righteous ones will reply, Lord, when did we ever see you hungry and feed me? Or thirsty? Oh, sorry, 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 Jesus was not missing sarcastic, I take that back, um, I apologize, Jesus was not missing sarcastic, it was actually referring to the people who did that. You know, who, who actually, um. Um, fed him when he was hungry, gave him drink when he was thirsty, so then the righteous ones will reply, Lord, when did we ever see you hungry and feed you? Again, it is not indeed, oh, I'm going to Jesus' house today, as in, AKA church. And so I will go with all my money and they put you there, there is a place for that, please don't get me wrong. But it is not saying, okay, so this is when Jesus knew, so, ah, I have seven billion in my account, then you got poor everything else, oh yeah, well, Jesus, I can't, send it to me, let me give you just one. No, 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 it is saying that because you have represented my interest in the heart of the people that you call your brethren, then you have done these things to me. So, Lord, when did we ever see you hungry and feed you? Or thirsty and give you something to drink, or a stranger and show your hospitality, or naked and give you clothing? When did we ever see you sick or in prison and this issue? And the king will say, I tell you the truth. When you did it to one of the least of these my brothers and sisters, you were doing it to me. Then the king will turn to those on the left and say, away with you, you cursed ones. Into the eternal fire prepared for the devil and his demons. When I was hungry and you did not feed me, I was thirsty and you did not give me a drink, I was a stranger and you did not invite me to your home. I was naked and you not gave me clothing, I was sick and in prison and you not discipline. Then they will reply, Lord, when did we ever see you hungry or thirsty? You know, or naked or sick in prison and did not help you. And they will answer, I tell you the truth, when you refuse to help the least. It tells you the heart of God towards his people, that even the least in our own eyes, and the person that is the least person in our gathering. Matters a lot to the Lord. So the thing that you are dealing with that person, that you think is least, eh, is that you are dealing with the Lord. So again, it helps you put things in perspective and, and help you see people how God sees them. That I don't mistreat people because you feel you're better than them, or you're bigger than them, no. And then they will go away into, um, into eternal punishment, where the righteous will go into eternal life. It's interesting that righteousness here was not even referring to, um, you know, your salvation. Oh, I'm talking about what, you know, like the, the things that you did in here, so-called salvation, let's see, let's see. Because Jim said, you know, sorry that, well, I'm not sorry really, but we, we really need to branch into that so that we don't have a, um. A wrong understanding, when Jesus was saying, the path for me. James was saying, you show me your, or rather, you, you tell me that you have faith, you know, by saying it. Me, I'm saying that I will show you my faith by the work that I do. And that trumps the gospel of, oh, you don't have to do anything, you know, just come to Jesus, oh, everything is just smooth and, you know, no, 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 no. Yes, come to Jesus as you are, don't pretend, don't try to fix yourself and then come to him, no, he's the one that fixes. So you come to him to fix you, but when you get to him, it would be foolishness. And wastefulness for you to stay as you are and not allow him do his work in you, because Jesus will not leave people the way they are. If you check the history of the disciples, you call them, you know, from the. Many other things that they were doing, said, I'll make you future of men, rest Peter up, who is an unstable, sarcastic. And over Sandy Alboy, and raise him to be an apostle, strong, to be the first church, you know, that's how Jesus deals with people. He takes a blind eh bathe, bathe me, me, or send me back. And restores his sight, leaves him better than he met him, that's how Jesus works. So if you come to Jesus, I am saying, oh, you know what, um, Jesus is not afraid of my, um, um, shock coming, he's not afraid of my, you know, um. My laziness, my lack of discipline, um, my, my, my gossips, my, like, all the very, very things that you, all the bad things that you know that I used to do, yes, I call you out. All the bad things that you know that I used to do, I feel like, oh, Jesus is cool with it, Jesus is cool with it, he wants you to come to him, to that you can squeeze that seat out of your life. So you better know it now and know peace. You know, so come as you are, so that you can be transformed into his image, that is his goal for you. So when we think of, um, um, the, the works, you know, as Jim said, I will show you. My faith, I will show you that me, I have faith in Jesus, I will show you that I may follow out Jesus by the good things that I do. That is by saying, oh, I'm a child of God, you know, saved, and justified, and sanctified, and otherified, and otherified, and otherified. Look, it's saying that by the good things that I do, I will, when I see a widow in need, I'm very quick to help them, because I'm thinking, what is the heart of Jesus over this person? When I am fighting with my friends, I'm not going to let them beg for my mercy and, you know, be, be on the floor rolling and say, ah, I will pay you back. I will show you, you know, because I'm thinking, okay, yes, I'm paying, but again, what is the heart of Jesus over this person? When I see somebody acting in foolishness, I'm not going to say, oh, because you know what, I don't want them to be mad at me, I don't want them to be offended, and so I'm just going to, um. Yeah, I just need to be there, I'm just, no, 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 it's saying, Jesus would not want to watch this person go into hell. So I'm going to step in, you know, and be a, a servant, Holy Spirit, actually, I say, hey, my brother, come here, don't worry, it's a fire, let me help your life. Yeah, again, this, um, branching out that we're doing is not, you know, because we're trying to team time, is because the Lord will have us. Again, especially just one, um, verse over another, so that we can have the full, um. Body of truth, again, this is tenets of truth, so tenet means layer by layer, you know, one, one pillar, another pillar, one stone, another stone, and today there's a full council of the Lord. In our hearts, so let's go back to our, um, Psalm six. Um, so go away, oh, you who do evil, for the Lord has heard my weeping. Um, please, can you help us? Danny, can you please help us read what evil or iniquity here means? Um, yeah, what kind of iniquity or, or, what it means?
Okay, so iniquity is, um. To exact oneself, usually in vain, to come to nought, strictly nothingness. Also trouble, vanity, wickedness, specifically an idol, affliction, evil, false. Mischievous, monads, not sorrow, unjust, unrighteous, vain, vanity, wicked.
Okay, so, um, I mean, just when I were not carried away by the many, um, synonyms, explanations. Um, the evil here is referring to everything that is opposed to God's counsel, it has been mentioned in the sacrifice. Everything that is opposed to the counsel of God, that the mind of God here is evil. Because again, God is good, so anything that is not God is not good, period. Um, yeah, so, the Lord has heard my plea, the Lord will answer my prayer. So if you remember in previous C O Ts, we had said, or we had learned that, um. When you are lamenting, in your lamentations, or in the season of grief, in the season of sorrow. You know, the points that you don't get to as a child of God, that you are not supposed to allow to get to, is the point of despair. So we see again and again that the culture of David is, he knows the Lord, he knows the truth about God. So even though, even though there are many that stand against me, I know who my God is. I know what God is. You know, and I know that that cannot change, even though I'm crying, bawling my eyes out right now. I know that God hears me, I'm not going to say, oh, I feel, I feel so alone, I feel like I'm alone in this journey. I feel that God has forgotten me, and so because of that, that's the end. No, no, it's saying that I may feel the sorrow right now, my heart can be deeply troubled right now. But I know that when I come to the Lord, he hears me, and that's where hope, you know, that's where hope comes in. That's where hope comes in, that's where hope comes in, when there is hope in your heart, when there is hope in your spirit. Even though you are thrown to the very bottom, 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 bottom pit, you would say like Joseph, that you meant it for evil, you know. But God was reasoning to work out something in you. So even if this heartbreak is really, you know, squeezing out.
I've had this never again, I'm waiting.
You really, uh, uh, um, what's the word? It's not life, from my soul, you know, I'm not troubled, I'm not saying, ah, eh, that's the end, oh, take my life. Oh, let's bust, don't damme, oh, that, you know, like, there's no life again, there's nothing again to live for, no, no, it is saying that. Even though, even though, even though, even though that I am. Going through what I'm going through right now, I know that at the end of this, there is an expected end for me. My story is not ending with, eh, that's how God left me, that's how God left us, no, there is hope for me. There is hope for me. So David says, the Lord has heard my plea, the Lord will answer my prayer. The Lord has heard my plea, the Lord will answer my prayer, um, and K D V puts it as, the Lord has heard my supplication. So from verse one to there, he was supplicated, you know, the Lord will receive my prayer. Now, in verse ten, there comes a bus. Here comes the bus, here comes the bus. Let's quickly read the, um, last reference scripture for this chapter, before we read verse ten, because I'm thinking, it came with a lot of. It came with a lot of eh pride, but pride, good pride, pride in the Lord. Um, let me see, I think, yeah, so that's Psalm three verse four. I mean, again, we, we, we delved into Psalm three, so we should remember this, I cried out, out unto the Lord. And he answered me from his own mountain. Okay, so verse ten says. Let all my enemies be disgraced and terrified. That's what, actually, I have been, um, understanding in you, but, as I already, what came to my head, what came to my head was. He, he in bury Jojo, you know, I'm sorry if you don't see Gerbera, um, but, I mean, that's what, that's what it means. Um, may all my enemies be disgraced and terrified, may they suddenly turn back in shame. Um, hmm, I want to note what the concept of turn back in shame means, let me read this in. Amplified Classical. Um, so it says, let all my enemies be ashamed and surely troubled. Let them turn back and be put to shame suddenly, no, I, I need to the meaning of that turn back. Um, because. You know, like, like, what, what does it mean, you know, when you mean let them turn back, like, what does it mean? You know, um, is it saying let them turn back from their evil ways and now be ashamed, or is it saying, let them, um. Hmm, message says, cowards, my enemy, my enemy is disappear, disgraced, they turn tail and run. Oh, so, okay. Let me, are you able to help us with, um. The final. Strong destination position.
Um, is it, um.
Um, let's, let's do turn back and ashamed. Turn back and ashamed.
Okay, um, ashamed is a. Be disappointed or delayed. To bring to cause, oh, to bring to cause. Put to shame, to be confounded, to become delayed, to belong. Not belong, that the belong, there's space in between them, like, to what? Belong. And then, he said, he said common is what?
Um, ashamed.
Okay. Ashamed. To be disappointed, or is the same thing now?
Was it turn back you read just now?
No, 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 ashamed. Okay, let me read turn back, okay. Okay, turn back is, um, to retreat. To break, to build, to circumcise, to dig, do anything, do evil. Eat, lay down, lie down, lodge, make, rejoice, send, take, weep. Again, cause to, answer. While avass, bring again, back. Home, again, call to mind, carry again, seize. Continually, convert, deliver again, drawback, fete, this one is longer.
I think, yeah, I think, I think we can, we can pause. Okay, so, um, I mean, turn there means, you know, there, there's a path that, yeah, that is any, um, in whatever context had, you know. Um, 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 ventured on, there's a path, a path of, I'm going to disgrace you, I'm going to be the enemy. You know, there's, there's no hope for you, you're, you're gone and done, um, but like, now that David remembers. And declares that the Lord hears him and the Lord, you know, will answer his prayer, um, he tells them to turn. So from this venture that you have embarked on, from this journey of putting me to shame that you have embarked on, turn back. And now you will really want to be put to shame, because the Lord was not hearing you, because the Lord has answered you, because the Lord has answered you. Because the Lord has answered you. I want us to begin to just use this moment to thank God, because he always hears us, always hears us. There is no time that we call upon the name of the Lord, there is no time that we, you know, actually. Literally call upon the name of the Lord, that the Lord does not hear us, that the Lord does not hear us. That the Lord does not hear us, there is no time, I put it to you that there is no time that you, you know, just bow your head or bow your heart. And then just, you know, seek God, and that the Lord is saying, you know what, I'm not interested in this conversation, just go away. Get out, that is never God stands to us, that is never God stands to us, he hears, and not only does he hear, he hears and responds. He hears and responds, he hears and responds, he hears, like, he pays attention to us. He pays attention to us, he pays attention to us, he's the God who sees, he pays attention to us. It is very evident that God pays attention to us, because else how would you have a question ringing in your heart, and you're asking God, okay, I, I'm not sure how to. I mean, it still happened to me today, actually, live, live story, true life story, you know. Something happened, you know, I had to make a decision today, and then after I did, I was, like, I, I felt a very tight knot in my heart, and. I'm not sure if you felt like crying, like I was in pain, you know, I mean, I can't really go into the detail, but, um. And as I, as I felt that tight knot. and as I, as I felt that tight knot, I was even looking at myself, like, what is this one, what was going on? I mean, it was not very physical, it was more spiritual than it was physical, but like, I felt pain, you know, making that decision, but it had to be made. And I just found myself crying, you know, as that started to happen, I just clearly went to my rabbi, I said, hey, ma, I'm doing this one, I'm doing this one, I'm doing this one, and I feel like crying, like, oh, no, it's okay, it's fine, like, you know, it's normal. And then she, um, said something, as I was getting off of that conversation with her, and processing that feeling with the Lord, my friend just texted me and says, hey, Mo, how are you? Yes, you, you know, you're, you're, the Lord just brought you to my mind right now, you're trying to make a decision. It was, I don't know, to let you, I was scared, like, ah, like, he's just, like, I don't, this thing has nothing to do with you. You know, like, it has nothing to do with you, it is not a, it's not public knowledge, and if I'm not telling you, when I don't know, so, what do you mean, you're on my mind, I'm trying to make a decision. Of course I am, oh, yeah, what happened, which, oh, for father, this would give you, but like, it, it just again told me that, um, even in this, even in this, because the, the thing that happened was not even one, you know, it could be, you know, I had to break up with somebody, or it was one life threatening decision, no. But it was, it marred up to my heart, it marred up to my heart, and then it marred up to the heart of God too, that's what that tells me. And then in my pain, the economy would have, you know, converted that pain to, um, yeah, I mean, whatever, you know, like, yeah, whatever, no, no, but I talked to the Lord, and I said, God, see, I don't know what's going on, I don't know what I'm feeling this pain, I don't know what this means, but just help me, and then he tried to give me things to say, and you know, actually, I, I had to pray for, um, the people that were involved in the decisions. And, and I tried to pray, I tried to feel peace, I tried to pray, I tried to, like, the prayer was like I was, I was groaning God's heart over them. You know, and it was weird, because it was like, um, on a Monday, that's not what, that's not what should happen, like, you have a one that you pray for, you know. And then I, I got, in that moment, beard God's body, but I'm even trying to say that more importantly, for the sake of this conversation, is the fact that God knew that I was going to, the, the, the burden that he was going to share with me in that moment would be too powerful for my chest to carry, you know, I mean, not too powerful for my chest, but it would be very powerful for me to carry. And as I'm trying to navigate it, he has put my answer in somebody's mouth, a confirmation rather, in somebody's mouth. And somebody that was miles away from me could come and say, hey, Mo, you know, this is what God's counsel over you right now is. And it brought so much comfort to my spirit, because, I mean, first of all, it tells me that I'm not doing the wrong thing, and that God is actually invested in this decision. You know, so God actually does hear us, God does hear us, and not only does he hear, he responds. Yours may not be as, quote unquote, dramatic as that, it may not be very, um, again, because everything is supernatural to me. You know, it may not be as supernatural as that, it may just be that, you know, you, you have a question in your heart, and then you attend to it, actually, that's supernatural, I take that back. And then, you know, the person who is teaching at that moment just answers a question, or even you ask a question there on the call, and then somebody just brings an answer to you that brings light to your spirit, God hears, God responds. Or you have been brooding over something for a week, and then you have a dream, and then it's like, oh, now I know what to do. So God actually hears us, those things are not coincidences, not like, okay, the universe have now aligned together, whatever the, which is safe now. God actually hears and responds. Sometimes I will be brooding over something in my heart, and I'll open my Bible, say, yo, at least we'll be emotional today now, let's go, and that will just be the answer, whether I'm in people like, yeah, my God. I never, you know, so God does hear, God does hear, and it is comforting to know that God hears. We're not praying to a bell that cannot be, um, that, that has ears that cannot hear, that has eyes but cannot see. Praying to the living God, we are serving the living God, we are depending on the living God, that hears us when we call, that hears us when we cry. I want us to just begin to meet our minds, and just bless the name of the Lord, for he's the God who hears us, he's the God who responds to us, he's the God who listens to us. He's the God who pursues our best interests, not the ones that we think are best for us, but the actual best interests. And fights everything on our way until that interest is fulfilled. He's the one who actually, literally lives the ninety-nine, and comes in search of us, because there is Christ in us that must be formed. He's a good God, he's a good God, he's a good God, we can be comforted in the truth that God hears and answers. We can be comforted in the truth that God is not tired of our lamentations, God is not burdened by our lamentations, we're not a burden to him when we pray. When we come to the Lord and say, I don't have any help, I don't know what to do, I'm clueless, Lord, help me, God is not burdened by that. Like, if you do it seventy-five million times, God cannot be tired, like, it is comforting to know, God is not a man. God is not your husband that would say, look, I'm tired, I'm just gonna have a walk today, you know, leave me, I wanna go freshen up, no, no, he is not tired of your lamentations. Every time that you come to the Lord, he is ever ready to hear, he hears, he hears, he hears, it is so comforting. Oh, Lord, we thank you, 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 because we have a Father, yes, for us, we have a heavenly Father, who cares for us, who is not tired, who is not tired, who is not tired, who is not tired, who is never tired. In fact, he, he directs pleasure in our dependence, when we don't have any sense again, that God now says, okay, it's time for me to step in, yes, now I can read right here. We serve a God who is happy, we ask God into him again and again, and pouring out our hearts, he is good, he is good, he is good. We serve a God, I mean, you not have, you not have these, you not people appreciate how good God is, and how different God is from man, how God is not a man. We serve a God that will not come and say, oh, that's true, that's the thing that you told me yesterday, you know, they are stupid, I mean. God is not like that, he will not bring up your past to use it to turn to you, no, 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 he won't do that, no matter how many times that you have to pick up yourself from the floor and rise again, go on another country tomorrow and say, eh, eh, that's how you felt yesterday, that's how you died yesterday, that's why you showed arrogance yesterday. God is not going to do that, it's so comforting, and it gives us so much strength, so much comfort, so much hope, to know that we have a God, we can rely on a God that is perfect. That is perfect, that is perfect, that is perfect, the imperfections of men, they point out to the perfection of God, it's proof, it's proof that God is perfect. The fact that you can, even the people who mean the best for you, the people who are probably, you know what, I'm going to be your, um, um, I'm going to be your money tonight, I'm not going anywhere. When they have to intellect, we go somewhere, they are humans, they are men, and it doesn't mean they are evil, this means that they are not gods, but we have a God. We have a God, we have a God, he always hears us, always hears us, he always hears us, and doesn't judge us in the way that men will do. No, God doesn't do that, he doesn't do that, it will not come to him to come and ask us, like, eh, eh, yesterday when you came, and you were crying like an idiot. God will not do that, God will not do that, it is so comforting to know that God will not do that. God hears us, God hears us, God listens to us, God hears us, God hears us, God hears us, oh, Father, we thank you. We thank you, we thank you, because through Jesus, we have access to your ears, we have access to your ears. And so when we say in the name of the Lord Jesus, or when we say our Father who has the Lord turns towards us and says, yes, that's my son, what do you mean? Ah, the Lord hears us, the Lord hears us, the Lord hears us, the Lord hears us, somebody needs to say that to themselves, to be reminded again, the Lord hears me when I call, the Lord hears me. The Lord hears me, when Moriah calls upon the name of the Lord, the Lord hears and answers, the Lord hears and answers, the Lord hears and answers. The Lord hears and answers, when I call upon the name of the Lord, the Lord hears me and he answers me. The Lord hears me and he answers me, oh, what a God, 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 what a God. Father, we thank you, Father, we thank you, for you are good, you are good, you are good, you are good, and your mercies are everlasting. Thank you, thank you, thank you, sweet Lord, thank you, sweet Lord, thank you, sweet Lord, you have our lives, you have our dependents, you have us, oh, God, you have us, you have us in the end of time. Eternally, Jesus, we have been both waiting you, and we will serve you all the days of our lives. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Lord, thank you, Holy Spirit, for the grace that you supplied, for this name and for this teaching. We are exalted in the name of Jesus, for in Jesus' name we have prayed. Amen. Amen, amen. All right, we have come to the end of tenets of truth, part four, August twenty twenty-four. Twenty twenty-four, if you are, eh, if you are excited to have, um, yeah, if you are happy and you know it, shout hallelujah. If you don't shout, whoa, who fight us? Thank you, thank you, eh, hallelujah, yes, you cannot shout, type your hallelujah, shout it in the, in the, eh, on the group, shout your hallelujah on the group. You must, you must, yes, thank you, I see that you already, really long, if you're excited, actually, if you are excited, shout hallelujah. Type hallelujah, dance hallelujah, scream hallelujah, thank you, with many a two initial mark, God bless you, God bless you, God bless you, God bless you, God bless you. All right, so, um, do we have any questions, anything we want to share, anything that came to your heart right now while we were praying, or while we're teaching? Yeah, anything at all? Anyone, any question, any, um, you don't have to be religious, we're going to talk about. It can be a Bible question, a verse that you have been struggling with, or, um, trying to brood it over rather. Um, yeah, anything at all, please, you have the floor, if you have to go back to your notes to remember what that is, please, I'm going to be, so two minutes, and then we would close the, opportunity and we close the chat. Okay, so I'll say that as I know, um, thank you very much, everyone, I believe that we want to also pass some time to one, yeah, I have a very strong feeling that someone wants to spend time to learn and say, hey, maybe they think it's the end, oh, yeah. Let's, let's sit and have a conversation, some of you actually need to do that, you know, say, Lord, eh, hey, oh, yeah, stand down, yeah. Hey, Jimmy, let's sit, let's talk. A lot of joy, and I'm not joking, I, I do not say that, you know, so we need to sit down and actually talk to the Lord. Yes, so we need to sit down and actually talk to the Lord, like, I, I don't mean like your prayers, blah, 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 I don't know, I'm not in my tongues, I'm not, I'm not talking about. I think have a conversation with the Lord, I, if you've never done it, then I'm thinking, what kind of nonsense, eh, 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 talking, what do you mean have a conversation, it's God, your meat, no, no. Try it, when you get on the call now, try it, actually, sit, like, call secret is space for you and the Lord, make room for two, but it was a next tea. Yeah, I'm, I'm treading on, I'm treading on some dangerous path here, I know, um, if you're not on Twitter, you may not necessarily guess why that was funny. Um, but I, and I'm serious, you know, if you want to make something light, and just say, okay, I'm just gonna be, um, crying out my heart. You know, you just sit here and you say, you'll be shocked, actually, you'll be shocked, you will be shocked, some of you have conversations with the Lord. You've been praying outside of the awareness that God actually hears you, and it's time for you to come back and pray to the Lord that hears. Or sit and talk to the Lord that hears, you know, if you look at David's prayers, they were not, they were, there was a consciousness that God hears, there was a consciousness that God is here and he listens to. So if you're looking to somebody abstractly, it's talking to, it's talking to, I mean, for example, I can be saying, that's true, that means, eh, so, maybe, maybe after this one, I'll, he will just go and, I mean, that is on the call, I could, I could be saying, dummy, please, after this call, go and, you know, like, sometimes we pray with that mindset, like, okay, 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 let me just pray. Prayer is the master key, and we put the faith in prayer itself, rather than in the one that we pray to, prayer is a vehicle, a tool. You know, so it is time for you to sit with the Lord, and actually have a conversation, like, God. This is what I'm going to, I'm going to, you know, and because God knows, and he understands, so you may say it again and again and again to me, and I don't get it, but the Lord is never the case, it is never the case. Some of you need to sit with the Lord and actually have a conversation with him, and say, this is where I'm at. I don't know what I want to do, I don't know what help you want to really, but I know that I need you, so what do you have to say to them? You know, in those lines, yeah, what do you have to do to that, how shall we move from here, you know? And then you'll be shocked at how God will bring light to you, how God will actually speak to you. So, um, please, if that, if you, if this, if this is, you know, talking to you, this is referring to you, please, go ahead and have that conversation with the Lord tonight. Um, you are blessed, you are kept, you are preserved, in the name of the Lord Jesus. Tomorrow is Friday, and we're going in, seven P M, what's African time, please make any dates. Um, so some, sometimes you may not even know what you are storing in yourself, because it's like, I don't think, I mean, I know this is before, oh, I'm, I mean, I don't need these things, and I know that God hears me. And when trouble comes, I remember that, ah, it's not today that my strength is filled, because I have built up an army, you know, of, of weapons. So please do not miss meetings, do not miss meetings, they are very important to your soul, the Lord has, you know, put you in this community to be equipped and strengthened by his, his, his works here, then best believe that you are naturally fully when you do not miss anything. So do everything that you can to not miss meetings, yes, as I said, I'm very instructive, do not miss meetings, you know, if you have to not be present for a meeting. When, make sure that you are subscribed to YouTube, make sure that when it's uploaded, in fact, follow up to know that it's, it's uploaded, you know, so that you can go in and then take in what God has for you for that meeting, because again, he supplies daily working, so he has supplied the grace for this teaching, tomorrow, anyone will come, best believe. A new, the grace for tomorrow's teaching is not on today's one, me, I know it, if you don't know it, I know it, the grace for tomorrow's teaching will come tomorrow. And if you're not around tomorrow, or you don't listen for tomorrow's teaching, you missed out on that grace, sometimes you don't know what we miss until, until you miss it, actually. So please do not miss meetings as much as possible, try to be in clear light, if you're not able to join, like, please watch the replay when it's uploaded. Um, God bless you, God keep you game, have a very restful evening, and see you tomorrow.